We already have one truck like it and we're looking at the possibility of doing another one because it cuts down on the amount of trucks. Hopefully we'll speed up the time for plowing on wider streets, so.
You have to have some way to get rid of that 600 tons of salt, right?
We have no issues with that. It's another way to spread it, anyway.
All right, any more questions or comments? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? It is passed. Resolutions. Consideration of a resolution authorizing myself as mayor, Roxanne Harrington as vice mayor, and Sheila Letourneau as city clerk, Sarah Anderson, who is a deputy city clerk of the city of Alma, to obtain a digital signature using the DocuSign software with the Michigan Department of Transportation. So, we're moving into the 20th century.
No approval.
Support.
We have a motion, support. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion is carried. And the note down there does say that the state is requiring us to start signing documents that way, so.
Yes.
Now, resolution number two. Uh, let's see, is this written as a resolution? This is, uh, resolution to provide Matt with his step increase per his con- per the terms of his contract that was originally written in, what year, 2000?
March of 15, was it?
There's a date here someplace, I think.
That was, yeah, I'm sorry.
I didn't come prepared.
It was...
March for 2018, is that right?
Yeah, it was March of 18.
Okay. All right, if it's somewhere here, anyway. So, basically, it's just a resolution to authorize the payment of Matt for his step increase that he did not get back in March, so it'll be retroactive to that, I presume, unless you'd like to forfeit the...
It's like buying a 50/50 ticket.
Well, this is worse.
I've got some of those with me.
Okay, we have a motion, we can support?
Support.
Motion, support. Any additional comments, questions, or harassment? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion is carried. Matt will be paid. He may come to work again next week, so, okay. Moving down to agreements. First up is consideration of a resolution authorizing the revised project authorization 2017-04 P9/R1 to increase the amount of federal and state funds from $76,699 to $77,775, which will provide additional funding to cover cost increases and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the city of Alma. And my guess is this is dilaride funding, is it?
Yes.
Okay.
It's only a thousand bucks.
Yeah, that's a little bit more than...
For the hour of time it took us to write this, we just spent the funds.
You're overestimating what I get paid, sir.
Everybody here for one act.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So...
Motion, support. Any more questions or comments? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion is carried. Next up is consideration of a resolution approving the development agreement, agreement for a dumpster enclosure between the city of Alma and Ryan Smith in parking lot number three. So, the note on this says the city will set aside the land for the replacement of a dumpster enclosure just south of the present existing dumpster enclosure, which is owned by the city of Alma, and the developer agrees to construct the dumpster on said parcel, the size of the city-owned dumpster enclosure directly north, and at the sole cost of the developer. So, the developer shall not have exclusive use of the dumpster. Once constructed, the city will maintain and repair the enclosure. And if in the future the structure needs to be rebuilt, it will be financed through a special assessment spread among the property owners of block three, which is how the original enclosure was built many years ago, so, um, your pleasure on this one.
So, move.
Support.
Motion, support. Questions?
Um, this is just a capacity issue. We have four new apartments coming online above the Treasuris building. If all goes to plan, we'll have another 19 to 20 in that same block, plus with the businesses there, so we really don't have enough capacity in the current dumpster enclosure there. So, this is a way to, one, get extra capacity, two, our intent of the ordinance was, one, aesthetics, we keep them, get them away from the buildings and enclose them, and, two, a fire issue. When this originally got put into place, for my time even, there was a few dumpster fires in the downtown area, and so having them away from the building is also safety from a fire safety situation. So, the developer's willing to do this and get this built and, um, willing to, obviously in the future, when we get to that point where we need more to use that other side, that it's not exclusive. So, hopefully, we'll have enough capacity after this to deal with everything that's needed in that, that area.
So, is the, the design and construction, is it going to mirror the existing?
It'll be the same size and, um, built with the bumps, the bump posts and things like that, but it'll be made of a different material. We're going with, um, a cheaper material, see how that works out, um, because we spent a lot of money on those, um, those concrete blocks.
Yeah, it was very expensive, yeah.
Yeah, so, we're gonna, we're gonna try these out, and if, you know, the guys that designed them said they should last us 25 years, so that is, it's gonna be a huge difference in cost when we go to replace either one of them.
Okay, what's the material that they're...
Oh, we're using bumper post concrete, um, and it'll be vinyl, um, the closure itself will be vinyl, but it'll be bump posts all around it.
So, like vinyl fencing?
Yeah, kinda like along that line, yes, yep, yep.
Okay.
But if it works the way they're talking, it sh- it should last 25 years, which, we're lucky, most things last 25, 30 years before they, they make them, put some money into them. And if they work, it's gonna be significantly cheaper to do this type of a design than it is to have...
Do you have a cost estimate?
No, I haven't yet.
Okay.
The contractor, JBS, will be doing the work, and I haven't seen the, the number. They did send over the, the drawings and stuff to us la- end of last week, so, gonna take a look at those this week.
I'm trying to think back when we did those other ones. I don't think it was around 20,000, maybe?
Yeah, it was 20,000.
Yeah, it was around 20,000.
So, I'd just be curious, I looked at the cost differences and...
Because we had to find masons to come in and, and do that work, and it was tough to find. It was very tough to find.
All right, so we have a motion, support. Any more comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion is carried. Reports, we have a police report from July of 2019 and Parks and Recreation Minutes of August 19th, 2019. Your pleasure.
Move to accept the reports. Receive.
Receive.
Support.
And we have support. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion is carried. Appointments. Consideration of, uh, the appointment to, of Matt Schooli, city manager, and Greg Mapes, mayor, to the Greater Grashut Development Incorporated Board of Directors for the term of October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2020.
No approval.
Motion, support. Anybody comments, questions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion is carried. Consideration of a resolution appointing Ted Gadfrey, Ben Lawn, David Justin, and Heather Theron as alternate to the Alma Board of Review for a one-year term.
No approval.
Support.
Motion, support. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That motion is carried. These are the new business. We have a presentation schedule from Ms. Kathy Phillips, who is our new finance director and city treasurer, on the finance department activities. Kathy, take it away.
As Matt said, we, um, we have a lot of ambitious projects coming up over the next few months and a lot of difficult topics that we have to get to, so, um, I'm sure there's quite a few of you that understand fund accounting and government accounting, but for those of you who don't, I just put a little, um, primer together to give you a little information. I'm not gonna go through all of it, but, um, if you have any questions on some of these, I'd be glad to sit down with you and help you understand it because government accounting is very much different from private accounting. And, um, we have to track things and, and report on things that the private sector would pull their hair out if they had to do, so, um, I just wanted to get you all in the field that there is a difference between private and public and to understand what our structure is. Um, on the third page, under general ledger, when you look at budgets, revenue and expense reports, you always see all these numbers. Those numbers are, are specified by the state, and so the first part, the first three numbers is a fund, the next six are department and activities, the third one is account, and then the last is a sub-account. Um, and I gave you an example there, so, this will help you keep, keep this in with your paperwork, so when you're looking at reports and you don't quite understand what some of those things are, hopefully this will help you feel more comfortable with the information you're, you're looking at. Matt was speaking about the internal service fees. Denise and I have been going through that, it's, um, we've done a lot of analysis, and we would like to bring a proposal back to you, the first meeting in September, in what, how we want to put this together, um, and basically, um, I'll use the garage as an example with the internal service fees. Right now, all the labor and parts that, any transactions that happen in the garage is billed out to other departments. It really doesn't make a lot of sense because they're city employees, so we're billing other departments in the city for the same work. When we did this analysis, we found that the revenues and the expenses for this didn't even match up. There was no, there was no rhyme or reason for how we were allocating any of this stuff, so, you know, we're just kinda moving stuff around and we really don't even know why, so, we're taking a real hard look at it. We'd really like to do it slowly and do it proper so that we can move things forward in the right, and get it right the first time. So, we'd like to bring it back to you in September, show you what we think we, you should do, and then let you have time to look at it. We'd like to then implement it and then go live on October 1st. I know all my colleagues at the city here will be very happy if we can get this fixed because it's been a item of contention for a long time. Um, it causes a lot of confusion, and if it's not done on a timely basis, it's not, um, defined, which it's not, it's really, it's useless, absolutely useless, so. Other projects that we're working on, Matt's working on a lot of procedural stuff with an employee manual. I'm also doing one in the finance department. Um, we're looking very closely at budgeting, and we wanna make this a much more, um, meaningful process. We're also working with doing some different things in banking. Um, we're gonna set up a capital improvement account, um, at a separate bank, at Commercial Bank. That bank will hold all our capital improvements money. We will have a narrative of what every single dollar in that bank account is for, so if anybody has any questions, we can say, "This is the amount there, and this is how it will be allocated." It'd be totally def- different from the general fund. We're going to do an escrow account. The escrow account will be any money that comes from the state, Act 51, revenue sharing, any of that kind of thing, anything we get from grants, uh, all that money will go into the escrow account, and as needed, it will then go to the general fund to be paid out. Mark and I were talking about any money that comes from a grant for, um, his stuff, where it has to be very specifically spent for the police department. That bank account, in our monthly closing process, he will get a copy of the bank statement, and he will have to check off and initial any of the transactions that are relevant to the police department. So, when somebody comes to audit either the police department or our records, they can see that that money was in escrow account, this is where it went out of the general fund, and that, um, the public safety officer approved that, so, um, it's a good checks and balances, um, the auditors will love it, and it, it makes things much easier for everybody where everything's in a specific place. So, enjoy your homework, and please, if you have any questions, please come see me or call me or email me. Um, I'd rather you ask questions than not ask questions and be concerned about something.
Kathy, lots of, lots of steps which seem necessary in the process. With the new software, with those...
Yes.
Are they, are they now automated, automated, these steps? I mean, that's a matter of looking at them, or is this...
The steps for...
Like, what you just talked about with Mark. He gets the checkbook, he marks them. There's approval queues, there's all these other kinds of things.
Yes. Yeah, and I have a, a monthly closing manual, a checklist of everything that has to happen by the 15th of the month. And a part of that is make sure the public safety officer gets a copy of the bank statement so he can check it off. So, everything should be by the 15th of the month. We're always gonna have some transactions that filter in after, but for the most part, we are gonna make sure things are taken care of by the 15th, and we're gonna make sure with the checklist that we track it all.
With, um, many ti- many times in the past, you know, it's been six months past the closing of the year before we had any financial numbers that we really had any degree of confidence in.
Yes.
Do you anticipate being able to supply quarterly or monthly statements?
Absolutely.
Going forward at some point, and any, and I won't hold you to it, but is there any window or timeline that you've got that we might begin to get either monthly or quarterly reports?
I would like to give you something in September.
Okay.
I would also like to give you some benchmark numbers, uh, so we can start tracking things. In other words, um, certain percentages, and how those percentages relate to other communities in Michigan of our same size, so that we can say, you know, we're, you know, 10% higher than this community, why is that? So, we can start finding more efficiencies and find out where we can do better in certain things, so, um, that'll be a process, and we'll see which, which of those dashboard items make sense, which, which ones we have to get rid of, but, um, you know, this is gonna be a little bit of an experiment, but I'm gonna need all your support to say what you want and what you don't want. But I'm hoping by September, I can give you some, at least something, I promise.
Very good. We look forward to it, believe me. You've been kinda starved for information, so...
Yes, and I, these guys, I keep throwing stuff at them, and I'm like, "I'm so sorry," but they seem to be willing.
As you're aware, we're, you know, moving into a process that ideally is gonna hold our department heads accountable for their budgets and...
Exactly.
How they spend the money and how they do things, and if they don't have good numbers to base their judgments on and their...
Right.
Decisions on, then that system isn't gonna work either.
Exactly.
So, it is critical that we get good information...
Yes.
To everybody's hands in a very timely manner.
Yes.
I appreciate the efforts and...
Not a problem. Got a lot of work ahead of us.
Go forward.
Got a lot of work ahead of us, but we're, we're gonna get it done.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you get a copy of that?
Yep.
I'd like to let, let you know, I mean, um, there's been a meeting already that's taking place with the auditor, um, to really lay out the checklists and what we're going. I was given a copy today, obviously, of everybody's assignments for the audit already, and due dates on the backside of those of when things are gonna have to be put into the audit file. Um, so the idea of, of staying up to date so that we're not so far behind at a certain point in time, uh, was really nice to see, so, um, we've sat down and had a 30, 60, 90-day talk about some things that, that we need to keep seeing going forward, so, uh, there is no doubt she has hit the ground sprinting. Um, yes, and we're happy to have her.
Cover my next question.
Oh, okay.
Would that please our auditor?
Yeah, the decision...
Well, it'd please our budget, too.
Kathy made the decision almost instantly to bring the auditor, let's make a phone call right now, and let's start, and let's have that discussion right this minute about what should we be, um, a big part of the conversation. She spent quite a while here, that data, so let's, let's see exactly where we, how we should set this up so we go forward.
We've been promised for years to have it straightened out, and it didn't, so...
We're optimistic once again.
Absolutely.
Now's the time.
Thank you.
Anybody else have more ca- questions for Kathy? She did want to sit down, but she didn't like the room, so...
I do when we get to the appropriations.
Okay.
Because I just have to understand something.
All right. Well, there's no questions there, so we'll, we need to receive her presentation, or is that just, okay?
She was talking to us.
She was just talking to us, well, thank you for talking to us. Glad we're still speaking after all these months.
Absolutely.
So, we entertain a motion for the appropriations.
Will somebody, appropriation, support?
Motion, support. Comments and questions? Here we go.
Okay, and the warrant to the treasurer about the water usage charge, is it, isn't that a significant amount compared to what it usually is? Or is it just me?
79,000.
79,000, or 19,000?
The water authority? She talked about that.
The water usage charge.
It's about, from what I've seen, it's about what it has been in the past. I can look back further and see what it, um, what it has been, but...
It just seemed like a landmark.
And I don't have the figures in...
Well, and all the...
The summer being early watering months and things.
Is July.
July is usually your highest.
Didn't have any rain in July at all, so if anybody's doing any kind of watering...
Right.
Yeah, that would, that would increase it, so...
We need the grandkids over there, pool thing in the backyard.
Yeah, it was all Tony's fault.
Slip the slide.
Well, hopefully, he's...
It just looked like a bigger...
Well, Michelle, it is strange to see as I've been involved growing, you look at those, of how consistent, it is weird, now you look back through the years and, and how it does all kind of stay rather consistent.
I'll probably still have a question next year when I look at it, and you'll remind me about it this year. Okay.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion is carried, we've paid the appropriations. Commissioner, comments? Father object lead aside.
Oh, let's see, I guess I would say, uh, welcome back to all the Alma College students and first timers. Welcome to the city of Alma.
Michelle?
Uh, Lucky McDuck is September 7th at the library at 9:00, and Roger has Lucky McDuck tickets.
I'll be selling tickets tomorrow from the farmer's market.
Okay, and...
Or Saturday morning with me at the farmer's market. Come visit us. Buy tickets.
There you go. And, um, September 14th is Keep Alma Beautiful Cleanup Day, 9:00 AM at Chamber, so we need a lot of volunteers to clean up Alma.
Thank you, Mom.
Thank you, Mom.
Thank you, Mom.
And the DPW department, the guys have, um, received a couple messages from me, from citizens of Alma, and they've jumped right on it, so I wanna thank them for their hard work keeping the city going. That's about it.
Just echo Audrey's sentiments, welcome to Alma College students, and also reminder to all citizens with the school opening, lots of folks walking around and on the streets, please be careful and watch out for, for the little ones especially.
They're so cute.
Yeah, they're small, they're easy to mess, you have to be careful.
They are, they're fast, very fast.
Roxanne?
Yeah, and thank you, Kathy, for getting things rolling in the finance department. I appreciate all your hard work.
No problem.
So, that's it.
Larry?
Uh, September 7th, 8 o'clock in Ithaca, we are starting the big build for Habitat for Humanities. If anybody wants to grab their hammers and whatever, mow, dry some nails, uh, lift some walls, uh, we need every type of expert there are, and if it's just muscles, but it's amazing to see, to see this go out. The foundation is being finished right now, the flooring, and the prison builds the walls and we put it up just like a puzzle, and hopefully by the time we leave there Sunday, we'll have the walls up, the roof on, and, uh, windows in, and it will look like a house. It's been a number of years since we built a house in Grashut County, so, and, uh, we need your support. We wanna show Clinton County that, uh, that Grashut County can, can do it, so...
What time does that start?
About, about 8:00 to 9:00. There's different shifts, you can come anytime. If you come 11:00 to 1:00, you'll probably have dinner.
Also, are there openings at that time?
But we'll appreciate any help, so, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Roger?
I just wanna say a little bit more about Lucky McDuck Day. We shortened the name, and that unfortunately kinda takes away half of what the day is. It's Lucky McDuck Family Fun Day, is what it is. It is the prop, the, the major fundraiser for Pine River Arts Council, which is a philanthropic organization that funds art-related activities in Grashut County. The banners that you see downtown, the, um, Community Art Center, um, money is given, we have given, I think, $75,000 so far in our history, most of it in $500 increments because we have a $500 non-competitive grant. You just ask us for money, and if you meet the criteria, you're most likely going to get 500 toward, um, high school kids going to Stratford, um, the band, uh, playing its stuff, Pine River, or the, um, uh, the kids program at the Strand is partially funded by Pine River Arts Council. Just lots of stuff like that, and this is our major fundraising, and that's primarily from the duck race and the sales of, um, stuff from the Just Ducky Shop. Lots of activities for kids, just lots of stuff to do. We start at 10:00 in the morning, and the ducks go in the water at 4:00 in the afternoon, which is a fun part of the day, anyway. Um, 100 prizes, top one being $1,000, and then 99 other prizes, all worth 10, 15, 20, 25, $30 apiece that have just been donated. It's just a fun day, we hope the weather's great, there's food there for lunch, and there's donuts and coke and all kinds of stuff, pony rides, bounce house, all that. It's a family fun day. Come up supporting. 37.
Okay. Number?
Can I cut back in? I forgot.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, Michelle. Um, we wanna, uh, thank Chris Brown again for making the city of Alma's new logo, and the Alma Action Committee, uh, made magnets, and they handed them out to over 300 cars on Thursday, um, to all our visitors that came for the 127 cruise, and they're $5 if you wanna buy a magnet through the Alma Action Committee. Chris Brown did a great job. There you go.
Michelle, you heard nothing?
No. Sorry, she, like, took her five. I'm sorry.
You forced her when you talked to her. Tony?
I'm okay.
Yeah.
Just add to all the events coming up, uh, September 7th also is the Alma Grand Prix Cyclocross out behind the Transportation Center. If you've never seen something like this, you need to just pop out and take a look. I mean, uh, we have world-class riders that come here. This is part of a, a tour where you have, uh, these world-class riders come in, it's part of a, um, a long-time events that they've had going on, so, um, pretty neat, uh, to see that we have it here. I'm gonna try and make sure we get posted up that shot of the, their drone video, we get a chance to see the whole course out there. But a really good time to have that. And while you're out and about that day, it's a real good, good time to stop and...
I've often noted about the, um, the cyclocross, my son-in-law has gotten involved and loves it to the point that he just bought his seventh bike, so...
There's a 5K in the morning that you run the actual cyclocross track, which goes through, uh, a lot of, uh, different terrains and elevations and different things like that, so, um, I'll be there, I won't run, but I'll see you to do that, but, uh, it's a, it's a, a lot of fun. And thank you to everybody for the, the 127 carcrews, like you mentioned, it's, it's always neat to see that many cars downtown and, and folks out and about checking everything out. Eric and I started in, we're day what, night? Yeah, we started in the cyclocross promotional video, so we're day nine, so, um, we're getting pretty close tomorrow, is that what?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, tomorrow.
So, I brought him to you to talk to you.
Exactly. So, you can just see.
That is a really cool event. I think my first time was last year, and it was impressive. I was amazed at the number of people there from, like you said, across the globe. I was amazed at the number of people there from, like you said, across the globe. It was there truly an international event right out on the old airport in Alma. And it's just really cool to watch the different terrain they have and how they do things. It's really impressive. Also, you know, kudos to Larry and his group of Habitat volunteers building a house. You know, we don't realize it because it's invisible in most cases, but there is a lot of homelessness in Gratchit County. There's a lot of families that have homeless home issues or housing issues. You know, we don't see them because they're not came from under our bridges or, you know, sleeping in our parks. But they are sleeping in people's basements, in their cars, you know, all these different places, so. You know, kudos to the group for attacking that problem. It certainly is vital.
You want a thrill of a lifetime when you hand that key over to the homeowner. It's just amazing.
So thank you for your good work there. And Roger, of course, and the whole Arts Council. You know, there's people that, if you're not taking part in some of the events and activities that are sponsored by the Arts Council and the talent we have in this community, you're missing out a lot. You know, between the Strand and the college and, you know, the list just goes on and on of things that you can do and the different things that are sponsored. There's a lot of cool events, there's a lot of cool activities. People do support them and it's good to see and glad it's continuing and thank you for your work on that, so.
This is kind of an interesting thing at the Strand, you see the sign is up now for The Good Doctor, which is the first show. This is a really neat show, but the, the second show, and I don't remember the name of it, it's I'll have to look at it and think. It is a cooperative effort between the college, the Theater Department and Gratchit County Players. It is being directed by the Arts Director. The costumes from the college are going to be used. They are using a mix of their lighting people with our lighting people. It's, it's the first real cooperative venture that has taken place. And they are also, right now, the college is doing the Music Man, which was open to anybody who wanted to try out for it, so. Yeah, that's just, that's the first time we've had that kind of cooperation in the ever and that's great because they have assets and we have assets and it's fantastic.
We've got to accomplish a lot more together than we were together, so that's over and over again, we've demonstrated that, so. Great, good news there, too. And Kathy, and thank you for your hitting the ground running. We appreciate that. And do look forward to seeing some images from you and making use of them. So I'm sure department heads are anxious to see their members as well, so.
Yes, they are.
Great news, a lot of positive things. You mentioned the college students. Great to have them in town, great to see the Opera House is going to be occupied for the first time in their years.
Nine years, almost.
Yeah, along with all the other activity downtown that's been spurred, not in, in no small part because of the college's investment in the Opera House, so.
We happened to see the greeters at the schools yesterday. I thought that was
That was cool.
College athletes that were there to greet kids at the different schools as they came to school yesterday.
Yeah, college is definitely an asset that, yeah. Most of the rest of the state is jealous because we have that college here, so we're very grateful for that. Okay, with that, I have nothing else. We'll open up to the public. Anybody want to speak to the commission? Please go to the floor or the podium, state your name and address and ensure your thoughts.
My name is Laura. I live in St. Louis. I want everybody to know that keep the Redmond family in prayer for what happened to her. She didn't deserve it. And it's unfortunate that, you know, we need to keep our kids safe because it's a tragedy. And think of the two-year-old that got lost in the fire in Mount Pleasant. These kids don't deserve what they get. And just keep the kids safe from gun violence and everything because it's bad. I see it on TV. I seen a picture of the little girl on TV and I about cried because it's, it's hard. You know, parents can make mistakes, yeah, but they'll pay for them. And I want to commend the police and the firemen and everybody, the ambulances for a job that tried to help that two-year-old in Mount Pleasant. And I can't imagine, I can imagine, you know, everybody losing their child. I lost my son about a year ago. And I just, I feel for the family. Just keep their, keep our kids safe from gun violence and fires and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure we all keep Redmond family and all, all others in our interviews and thoughts, so. Anybody else care to address the commission?
My name is Mark Prouck. Live on Iowa Street. I have two items. First of all, I'd like to thank our city manager and the Alma Police for the effort to slow on traffic on Iowa Street. I've noticed police there the last couple of days. Police presence really assists in slowing down traffic and I, and in between appointments, I noticed that people are slowing down when policemen are sitting there, so. Second thing I'd like to address, last Tuesday on August 20th at noon, I was filling my car with gas at Meyer. I heard a horrific crash and as I turned around, I saw a northbound pickup drive a car backwards over the curb and into the Advance Auto property. I'll never forget the screaming that I heard until the pickup came to a stop in the middle, middle of Elger. When I got home, I contacted my children, three of which shop at Meyer and requested that in the future they use the Cheeseman Elger Stoplight to access Elger. The access to Elger from Meyer is dangerous. Forty-five miles per hour is too fast for Elger with all the new businesses that are being created along there. The lane marking from Meyer to Elger, the lane markings are not clear and they're deceptive. When you turn left, some people are in the right lane and they're not doing it properly. I also have noticed shoppers use the center lane on Elger to merge going south. So they use the center lane and they merge into the next lane and that causes danger from people that are making a left off of Elger. Something needs to be done before someone is killed in front of Meyer. And when that accident happened, I heard the screaming. That was blood curdling, but the people in each car, the person in the truck and the person in the car were not able to get out. They were being assisted, but I didn't know if anybody had passed away or not. My question is, has there been any discussion on the city council and/or by the city manager in regards to the Elger speed limit and the access from Meyer to Elger?
The location is not in the city. Those are city, city limits is at the really end of the old Kingmark lot.
Well, I, when I came in the, when Meyer built that building, they said it wasn't the city limits.
There's a
Meyer store.
Meyer store is in the city, the gas station and everything, but the front is in the county.
Oh, it is.
Yeah.
So it's township.
Township, probably.
And the road is
And it's an M dot, Road 2, so we don't control the speed limit, nor does the township, or the drive approaches or stoplights.
Is there anything that can be done to rough traffic in a different way so that someone, I thought, I really thought somebody
The best thing is, you, you mentioned the best thing, I think, and that's what I normally do, is go back off the Cheeseman and go to the light. It may take a couple extra seconds, but quite often it's actually faster and certainly safer.
Part of it that I have thought about, I'm delinquent for not doing it as well, is to talk with somebody at Meyer about them repainting their access road. That's the one that the striping is very confusing and confusing on. There are three lanes coming out and are there three lanes there to turn from or is the other and with no clear markings there, the paint's gone from it and it's really difficult. I don't know whether we can, or somebody could approach.
The other question would be, do, is there, and Mark, you may know this, is there a way for a citizen to get to M dot? In other words, if there's enough, if you make it public that folks think this is a problem, I don't know how, if they're glacial in terms of their speed, but it would be, if they hear enough from citizens saying, look, this is, this is risky. You need either do a study or put a light in there or dump something. How do we get people to know where to go and get it directly to M dot? I mean, we're, we can say things, but is there a website where you can say, "M dot, this is an issue we'd like you to look at"?
I'm not familiar with that. David might be more
I, I just, I just don't know if there is. It would seem to me that, that the public knows that if that ends up in the article or something like that, that start, they, they hear from more than you coming here and telling us and we're saying it's not our jurisdiction. To get directly to them would be my question, Dave. I don't know.
Forty-five is too fast. I've noticed
And they go fifty, they'll go five over because they know they won't get stopped.
Because there are people that will cross the road.
Yeah.
And that's suicide.
Take chances, yeah.
I know Pine River Township officials are hearing a lot about it as well and they kind of said the same thing, well, it's an M dot issue. I wonder if not just citizens, but maybe if some of the officials from their end and maybe the city of Alma, if we can all, I mean, voice our concern.
Resolution.
It's dan, it's very dangerous and we literally
M dot seems to use body counts to make changes and stuff. They wait till X number of people are killed before they go.
I know that discussion happened with M dot initially and when you look at the light structure of where they put the lights, because I know there was initial talk about shouldn't there be a light at the Meyer entrance? Well, you've got one right here at Cheeseman, one here and then one at Heather Lane. And they were not very willing to look at that.
And the thing is, probably eighty-five, ninety percent of the time, forty-five is a fine speed to do. You know, there's just certain times of the day, certain times of the, you know, traffic patterns where it's too busy to go forty-five and people should be slowing down. Unfortunately, they don't. You know, when the road gets crowded, you should slow down.
And Roger, I think you just said something. If you remember the, the goal in M 46 intersection for how long?
Yes.
Until, until we had a number of accidents there and then that changed the perception of M dot.
Is there, did you get a M dot website or something? Like, did it have an official website?
Their regional office in Mount Pleasant.
They have a regional office that Dave interacts with all the time in Mount Pleasant.
You can look into it.
Okay.
And I'm sure they could send Dave the last traffic study that they did on forty, on Elger.
But there's been three new businesses. I mean, Market Tile, and Credit Union, and Meyer.
Now, does the state have to grant the road permit, the opening permits like we do for, so? The state did study that at the time.
That was all looked at when the Meyer was done, so that's, it's been so recent that I don't know, I can't speak for them, but that was all part of the analysis, when the Meyer building came in there with those drive approaches, the spacing of them and the requirement to have that drive approach on Cheeseman, things like that to help with it. Speed study, I can't speak for the last speed study, but I'm going to guess it's been done within the last five years. So I don't think that's going to happen. Unfortunately, Roger did mention it. It goes by the volume of accidents. So many accidents per month, so many accidents per year. And the type of incidents, that's what really warrants the type of analysis for any kind of change, whether it be speed, markings, anything of that nature. And, and the speed studies go by, like we've talked about before, is that eighty percent, percentile? So if traffic is going
Ninety.
Fifty or anything like that, that's what they want to go by. They don't want arbitrarily slow speeds down because that creates more incidents, contrary to popular belief, but that is the analysis. That's why you see the speeds going up on the highway. When you've got somebody going fifty and everybody's going eighty, that's the traffic conflict is that fifty mile an hour when you want everybody going to similar speeds. It's not an arbitrary decision. It's not going to be a fast one. It's just something that we can put on the radar and that would be
But the one thing everybody can do is go to Cheeseman when you want to make that
That's what I meant, just tell your family or just go to Elger and Cheeseman.
Let me pose a question to you. I hate to put you on the spot, but I was told at one point in time by a policeman, not city of Alma, I don't think it was even here, that making a left turn into the center lane is kind of looked on by police as likely to cause a less damaging accident than somebody trying to get across five lanes of traffic and is therefore is kind of approved to do that, or is
Or is it illegal?
I'm coming out of my seat. I'm sorry, bud. I'm coming out of my seat. Because when I used to teach driver's ed, I taught a portion of driver's ed and we all love Mr. Peters. But we had a heck of a fight because that was being taught to use that center lane as a merge lane.
Okay.
And I can, I, oh, I taught that, no, don't, and I'm talking about, speaking of Wright Avenue there, it was coming out of the old Ashcraft Drive before we had closed down to the other one. Never make that left-hand turn because you couldn't. And I can remember stopping someone who made that left turn and drove all the way down to, to to Alma Hospital when I, I said, well, no, I was just, I was planning on turning. Yeah, I knew you were. No, that, that, that doesn't, I'm sorry.
Well, what
That's one of my pet peeves that just goes, that's illegal.
What was being taught was pull into the center lane and stop.
A merge, it was used as a stop and then go. It was being taught.
You still can't do that.
No, it's illegal. The Gratchit County Sheriff's Department actually patrols that frequently. There's a couple deputies in particular that patrol that a lot and make tickets for that quite frequently. It is very dangerous when you do that because you are having people wanting to use the left turn lane appropriately. And these people are putting everyone at risk. Plus, it's a, it's a vision obstruction for people actually trying to do it properly, so.
Thank you, sir. Cleared up.
One more time, go down to Cheeseman. What's that?
Or be patient.
Be really patient.
And the other thing is, quite honestly, depending on your car, if you don't have a quick enough car, all the blocks, you know, you're asking for trouble. You've got to be quick going in there if you're going to look for that narrow hole. And most cars today don't have that horsepower. Makes a difference as well. All right, anybody else? Whoa, we do have one. I was going to say, I didn't see anybody, but Lynn?
Lovely lady from the back of the room.
The Wright Mansion. I am glad to see that it's been cleaned up.
Would you please identify yourself?
Oh, my name is My name is Lynn Ludi and I function as the city's videographer. I do many other things, but this is the only paying gig I have, little though it is. The Wright Mansion. Oh, I live in Alma. Do you want my address?
That's appropriate, yes. That's what we generally ask for.
111 Wheeler Street, Alma, Michigan. Phone number? Social Security?
No, definitely not.
Good. I'm glad to see that the shrubbery has been peeled back. Looks much better. The city commission was talking about a timeline for getting fences up and things and I would like to know what the upshot is there.
By Labor Day.
Great fellow.
By Labor Day.
And if you notice, the poles are up.
Those are in.
The poles are set, and the fence has been, fence is laying. I've seen the fence, so we are, we are close.
I wasn't there today.
Yeah, the poles are up and the fence is on site.
Yes, good, excellent. I think
Cautiously optimistic we're going to see that by
Is there a next step?
Not at that point, really. We've done
What you can do. Right. Thank you.
If you remember, the house, the structure was deep to be perfectly safe. I mean, which is contrary to what my gut was telling me, so, but
I see that two-by-ten still holding that wall.
It is not. When the fence goes up, that will come down.
So that's just decorative.
It's really decorative. And plus now the fence will be there. If something does fall, there's enough fall area for that and people shouldn't be behind the fence.
No, trespassing.
So that is not holding it up. It's not holding it up.
But it does appear
It does, it does, yes.
It's not very decorative.